Existing septic storage tank because fifteen hundred gallons, you can go a long time with without that grinder pump working.
Right.
And if you know it's gotta be fixed, whereas seventy gallons is not much at all.
Yeah, absolutely.
Is there, there's no way we can add additional capacity?
No.
Storage capacity out there?
No, not now.
Well, okay. Well, I mean, the problem we're gonna run into is, is right now, I mean, you're not gonna get anybody to sit in that, out in that area that is gonna convert. I mean, they're, they're, all they hear is war stories of how terrible this thing is. I mean, that's, you know, it's gonna take years to live it down.
Yeah, and it's unfortunate because it is the one and knock on, we haven't had problems with
Well, when we say that, we, we, we had problems with the loop, we had to dig it back up again. I mean, people see, they don't know the specifics, they think this is all interrelated. Alright.
Okay.
But we should advise people, I mean, like, the lot next to me sold and there's a rumor that he's gonna build a house, I don't know if he is. You know, obviously, he would connect that, um, that, you know, he might wanna look at a solution that has more than a seventy gallon storage tank.
Oh, absolutely.
Well, I think, I think you can, and I think
The only two that we have to worry about are Sullivan and Britton's. Because they're within the four hundred foot
That's, I was gonna make that point.
The four hundred foot radius.
Well, yeah, but our ordinance right now reads, anybody else, if your septic system fails, you're not supposed to fix it.
They're not supposed to fix it, but, but if they put in a storage tank. Well, but if they put in a storage tank.
Use their present septic tank.
Well, they don't have one, if you're building new.
Why did Britain and, and not use their current?
Because they're within the four hundred foot radius and they have to be totally on the sewer system. Those houses would not be allowed to be built today if they weren't existing. You can't build within the four hundred foot radius. So they can have no septic system at all, they had to discontinue everything.
I understand why they had to, but why didn't they use the tank?
Because we had to abandon every part of the septic system.
Well, I question whether, I, I really do question whether you had to do that. But that, that's another, that, you know.
As long as it was tight, it, it, what's in between a seventy gallon tank and a fifteen hundred gallon holding tank? Realistically, if it's a tight tank and it's not going to leak or leach out.
Well, you would've had to dig it up and make sure that it was tight and everything else. You would've had to expose that whole tank.
You wouldn't have had to gone that far, but you would, you could tell by your D box and your levels, but whatever, let's move on.
This is DES we're talking about.
Yeah, this is, you're not, I'm not, I'm not saying these are good rules, I'm saying these are rules. And, and we're just trying to install what they're telling us to install and what, we're trying to meet what they're telling us are the regulations.
Yeah.
We built what we were told we had to.
No, Mark, we're not faulting you, we're not faulting this, we've done what we've had to do and we're paying for the results of what we've had to do.
Yeah, and I just, you know, we're, we're gonna, Sullivan and Britton are the two that I worry about the most, the others, we can, we can modify. They're outside of that four hundred feet, you know, I think we've got a little more flexibility with those.
But if the people next to you build, they're gonna have to come in with building plans and all that kind of thing.
They should put a standard fifteen hundred gallon collection tank in there.
Especially if they've got a bunch of little kids, Russian.
They, they won't size the tank for the number of bedrooms.
Number of bedrooms, yeah, absolutely. I would have no problem doing that, 'cause they're outside.
Well, no, he's gotta do it, I mean, it's, you know, so part of it is, he's gotta know, you know, to do that, he's gotta be told, you know, our advice would be to do it, you know, spend a little more money, get a bigger tank.
Yep, absolutely.
Okay, let's move on to the abatement recommendations from the assessing agent.
Yeah, you do not have to make final decisions, if you have questions or whatever, I can get more information for you. We, we only have these three abatement requests that came in.
And where is his property, Bradford?
The last one, the third one.
Is that a Golden Eagle or is it a Black Bear?
It is a, hold on, I'll turn you a second. One oh eight nineteen is
No, no, wait, nineteen is Black Bear.
Okay, so I had a question on this.
Five eleven.
I, I did have a question on this one.
Twenty-six is Golden Eagle, so.
Because it goes down through its, um, evaluation and the assessor says that the assessed value is eighty-three thousand seven hundred and twenty-one. And then says that we should deny their request. Is that because they requested something too much lower?
Yes.
Okay.
They were requesting the value be lowered to between sixty-five and seventy.
Sixty-five and seventy, okay.
He, the, the assessor is telling you that they feel that the fair market value is eighty-three when you apply the ratio, even though the number on the piece of paper is higher than that, that's, the eighty-three is what they're
Okay, I got you, alright.
Alright, do we have any discussion on these abatement requests?
No.
The, uh, the New England telephone one is so high because of, is this this little shack?
No, it's, it's all of the lines underneath the ground.
Thank you.
Yep. And that, that is still in the court system and probably will be for years.
And if you wanna grab, lose a few days, mention it to Al Lynch, he'll go off on this one. Alright, so I'm, I'm gonna make a motion that we follow the advice of our assessor.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, alright, so moved.
So I, I do have the application, we'll need your signature for each of you, we can do that at the end of the meeting.
Okay. Corcoran's Pond, or we did a new calendar review, anybody going anywhere?
Yeah, yes, I'm leaving next week, what's, when's our next meeting?
Well, that's the question, do you wanna, do you wanna go to
Two weeks.
The alternate week? Because your next meeting would be technically a week from today. Um, so what would you?
It would be problematic for me to make the eighth.
Okay.
Um, at three o'clock, it's not, not impossible, but
I think, I think unless something dramatic comes up.
To the city.
Are you back at the fifteenth?
Yes.
Uh, Margaret, are you good the fifteenth?
No.
Okay.
I'd be gone.
Let's go to the twenty-second, how are we doing on the twenty?
Well, we could stay with the eighth, I, you know. I, I, I probably, I haven't talked to Sandy about this, I'm assuming we, we have no, that we're probably not gonna leave till five, six o'clock anyway.
On the eighth?
On the eighth.
I think the only thing that we would have unless something comes up
Would be the water.
Emergent is the water and sewer project.
Yeah.
Alright, well, let's stay with that.
Let's stay with the eighth. So the eighth and the twenty-second?
Yeah, or otherwise, if you move it, then you're always, you know, eventually gotta get caught up.
Um, so we're looking at the eighth and the twenty-second?
Yep.
And then July thirteenth is a critical day, can everybody make the thirteenth?
I think so.
Yes.
Yes, why is the thirteenth?
Well, I'll explain when I give you the update on the water and sewer project, that's gonna be probably the day when we're, we're gonna award the bid.
Okay.
Hopefully.
That's six weeks from now.
I know. Well.
Yeah, no, I'm, Mark, I'm, not at you.
Mike. Frustration builds.
Alright, so since you mentioned the words water and sewer, let's do that.
Okay, so Rural Development, um, Joe talked with John Harries, who is doing the review for Rural Development, that will be complete by tomorrow morning. We have heard nothing since May twenty-fourth from New Hampshire DES on the status of their review. In the past, we have had to have DES approval before we could even put the project out to bid. Tomorrow, Joe is gonna ask Rural Development for authority to put the bid in the newspaper so that we can start the, the thirty-day bid process. And then tell New Hampshire DES that we will not award the bid until we have their approval. So that'll give us another month for DES to complete their review. So the timeline would go, authority to bid by Monday, we would be able to get a bid notice in the paper Wednesday, June eighth. The bid period would be June eighth to July eighth. That would give us from July eighth to July twelfth to review the bids and make a recommendation to you. You would have your meeting on the thirteenth and we would award the bid. So we would have the contract signed by the following week and it will give us a nine to ten week period to, uh, do the construction. What we are gonna ask Rural Development to do is to consider the construction of Well Four and the connection of Well Four to the water system, right, in the new building as substantial completion. So the, the physical connection of Well House Two to the common treatment tank, connection of Well Three, if, if we have sufficient budget to do that, that would not be part of substantial completion, so the contractor can focus on getting Well Four done and getting the connection done and approved by DES. Then we could go for final completion later in the year, so that would give them one or two or three months, whatever they need, through the fall to get the, all of the work done. We would request from Rural Development at least ninety percent of all of the grant money be actually turned into the town by substantial completion.
Even though some of the work
Even though some of the work hasn't been done, we're gonna, we're gonna request that, which they, my understanding is, they have done this, as long as you have reached substantial completion, they have given you the money. So we haven't had the final conversation with the, the money person at Rural Development, but right now, uh, we've got the construction people, John Harries, who is the construction review guy, um, we've got his okay to do that, um, and he's finished his review of the bid. So, uh, it's Ann Getchel that we have to reach out to and Joe should be talking to her now.
And she, is DES?
No, she's Rural Development.
Okay.
Yeah.
Now, let me ask, the, the process, when the bids, I remember we came, we got, once before, we went through some bids.
Yeah.
And Rural, what's Rural Development's expectation on the bids? I mean, do they, suppose the bids come back and they're thirty or forty thousand over what the estimates are?
What does, what does You are allowed to negotiate with the low bidder. You, you are
Well, yeah, but what, is there a point where if we wanna pay, if we're willing to make up the difference?
Yes.
Are we allowed to, you, to do that?
Yes, we are.
We are, okay.
And
So they're, they're not gonna, they're not gonna come back and say, that bid's too high, therefore, forget about it and you're back to ground zero.
No. And in fact, we have structured the bid document so that the connection of Well House Two to the common treatment tank, the connection of Well Three and the work on the existing Well House One, if we have to do that, all of those are being put in as bid alternates, so they are not part of the base bid. The base bid is building Well Four and connecting Well Four to the system. That's all that is in there as the base bid.
Now, when you say building Well Four, I thought Well Four had already been, that you're putting the pump
Putting the pump in, putting, there's gonna be a generator out there, there's gonna be a control panel, there's a fenced area, all of that work is what I mean by building
Do we need forest service?
No, they have approved everything that we have
So then we're not gonna get out there and they're gonna say, you can't put a fence
No, I'm calling Senator Ayer personally that minute, no.
Before you got here, Bill, one of the things we've asked Mark to do is send letters out to our senators and congresspeople to make them aware of this quagmire we're caught in right now, where we are under a deadline to receive the money, but we are being hung up on the process of getting the approval to even advertise the project, so that, just to prep them so when we come for their help later if we need it.
Okay.
We're, we just wanna show
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah. So, so the nine to ten weeks, Joe is, Joe is saying that the construction of Well Four and the connection of Well Four to the system, because all the line is already in and all that, that is all doable within the nine to ten week.
Assuming, have we talked to contractors to see if
Yes, and actually, Joe has had two contractors contact him for work and they're just waiting to
So they're waiting for these documents?
They're waiting for the documents.
Okay.
And, and, uh, I know Jim has talked to contractors who also
Is it necessary, um, by, you know, to, can't, can't, why can't we shorten the bid period, give people a week?
It's required, the thirty day
By who requires?
By Rural Development.
Rural Development requires, have we, has anybody asked if that could be waived?
They will, they will waive a day or two, like, if we got this out on the ninth, they'd allow us to go to the eighth, but they, they are required by federal law to use a thirty-day period.
Alright. Let's move on to the dam.
So, the basic, just so I understand, the basic bid document includes the well
The connection.
And the treatment pla, and the treatment plant upgrades?
The common, the common treatment tank with the little building around it.
Right.
And connection of Well Four to the system, through that.
Alright.
The add alternates is everything else.
Okay, alright, gotcha.
Okay, and I will update you by email as I get additional information.
Gotcha.
Okay.
We're trying.
Let's move on to another favorite topic, the dam.
Oh, yeah, you're gonna look at this. So, um, when, after Ryan was here, he sent an email to DES notifying them of our decision to continue to develop the concrete block solution. DES, he also sent in resumes of their staff, because that's a requirement under the state regulations that they provide proof that their engineers can do the work. DES vetoed Wright Pierce because they do not have any staff members, staff engineers who are experienced, have experience with the articulated concrete blocks, uh, of five years minimum experience, that's their requirement. Wright, you know, Wright Pierce is one of the biggest engineering firms in Maine and New Hampshire.
So they vetoed?
They vetoed them, but they did say if they could find an engineer with, um, the, the five years of experience, that they could have them be a subcontractor to Wright Pierce and basically sign off on the plan.
Can they give us a list of qualified engineering firms?
Yes, Wright Pierce has already done that, they found the Turner Group down in Concord, who has been an engineer for us in the past.
Right.
Has a staff guy who has the requisite five years, they are providing his resume to the state to get the sign off and he will be the subcontracted, uh, engineer for Wright Pierce for this project. So they're in the process of getting him certified and then we can move forward.
What about our com, any communication with, between them and us?
Between the state and us?
Yes.
Yes, I've been copied in all of the emails, I've been, I've been, you know, I'm telling Steve that we're, I verified that we're moving forward with, with this concrete block
Option, but nothing as far as timeframe, options and extensions?
Um, no, we're, we're waiting, when we get, um, the set of plans up to them to go from fifty percent to eighty percent or whatever solution, um, I think we're gonna be able to extend it probably to two thousand eighteen, um, for actual construction, because by the time we get everything finalized and out to bid, I, I don't know that we would be able to have a budget number for the seventeen town meeting. Um, I'm hopeful that we'll get, as long as they see progression and that we're moving forward, I hope that they'll be able to push it out to two thousand eighteen. That would be my plan.
Did you fill in on the conversation?
No, I haven't yet, 'cause I've, I'm
So I, so, you know, this is always the case, so I'm talking to, what's John's last name?
Robersch.
John Robersch. He does this, he lives in Canton, right, and he does this kind of engineering work in the state of New York and Connecticut.
Okay.
So I was talking to him and I said, you know, and he's been up here and looked at the dam, and, and he had a couple of comments, he said, first of all, he says, bar none, the cheapest solution is riprap. He says, forget about concrete blocks, total, he said, you're gonna spend ten times the amount of money that you take just using riprap to do it. And he said, you should be able to reinforce that with riprap for under a hundred thousand bucks or something, you know. But, now, now, you just said it, so, you know, so we shouldn't sit in, in stone here, that, you know, that what we're interested in is the least cost solution, you know, you know, rather than a specific solution. His other comment was, he said, in the state of New York, and he doesn't know the law in the state of New Hampshire, he said, but in the state of Connecticut and the state of New York, there's no way they can shut your dam down. He says, as long, he says, they could prevent you from selling it, but they can't prevent you from operating it. And he said, you know, I would get a lawyer to find out exactly what their authority is in the state, and, and he said, because most states, they don't have that kind of broad authority to literally force you to shut old dams down. So, we're back to, we need to find a lawyer that's an expert in this stuff.
And, and the riprap, we, we have looked at riprap
Right.
As a solution here.
Right.
And it, and it is a viable solution, but what we're gonna end up with is a pile of rocks.
Right, and the stand-up.
And, you know, we, from a, from an aesthetic standpoint and from being able to continue the bike path and, and the footpath and over the bridge and the connection to the Golden Eagle, if we use riprap, that, that is, those are no, those are not gonna be there anymore.
Why?
Because we're going over the area where they are.
Well, you know, then maybe we need to build a wooden bridge on top of the riprap or something, but, all I'm saying is, is we shouldn't lock ourselves, what, these engineers should understand that we need a reasonable cost solution.
Oh, well
You know, a coming back with a five hundred thousand dollar solution is, is a waste of time, because, again, my judgment is the town's not gonna authorize that kind of spending.
Okay.
So, we should always keep pushing
If you want them to look at riprap, then we will look at riprap.
The lowest cost, the lowest cost, you know, it's, now, if they think block is the best, cheapest way to go, then, but we need a low-cost solution to this problem. That's my only, my only feedback.
Explain, explain again on, on riprap, I mean
Yeah, I'm getting
Where, where does it, where does it go, does it basically block off the bridge at the other end?
The area, I mean, this is my understanding and I, I can get, I can get Ryan to, to draw it up, what riprap would have to do, but the same areas
That side, yep.
The, the same areas that we're talking about putting the, the concrete
Right.
Blocks on would be the same area that we would basically put big rocks on.
Right.
So, we, remember, we're doing all of this area, it's gonna have concrete blocks underneath and then we're gonna re-saw it and, and re-brick it.
Yeah.
Okay, and then over here, the gravel walkway and the path coming up, they're both in the area
Is, you're gonna go that far?
Yes, yeah, absolutely.
The old fitness trail, is that what you're talking about?
This is the area here. Everything that's cross-hatched, so here's the trail right here, and here's the path up to, to Golden Eagle, all of that would be rock.
Okay, but, I don't, I don't understand any of this, so just treat me as I don't
No, 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 okay.
Now, my question is, if you riprap this, which is a plastic membrane you put down and rock on top of it, is that correct?
Something like that, sure.
That if you put the rock on top of it, can't you seed it and grass it and put new paths on top of that? It's, it, it'd be kinda like a foundation underground.
If, yeah, I can, we can ask about that.
Can you do a combination of the two?
Maybe.
I mean, in other, in other words, put the riprap down?
Well, I, I think that the, again, the message to the engineers is, is, it's not the, it's not the best solution, what's the least cost way to do this?
Right.
We need to really understand that, now, if the end, that is so horrendous that we're not willing to do it, but, uh, you know, but, but I'm still trying to find the solution rather than fight the DES on this thing, because I think if it's a half million dollars, we're gonna get a lawyer and gonna, and we're gonna, we're gonna try the legal route.
Okay.
And that's gonna get messy. That is, at its best, gonna get awfully testy.
I agree.
Because, you know, there's, well, there's some facts in this
We're gonna spend a hundred thousand in attorney fees.
I mean, according, you know, your, your statement from Cantlin was that, what, we had one inspector
This was arbitrary.
Come out here and changed the criteria for the dam.
Yeah.
Well, who gives them the authority to do that? I, these are all the legal questions. Now, before we go that road, I'm hoping to find something that is sellable to the town.
Well, I, I, we have never talked about riprap being a viable option because of
Well, we've never spoken to this guy who knows it for a living.
Yeah, but I'm saying, we have looked at it, but it was never a viable option because it, it destroyed the, the pathways and it was not a visibly acceptable option in the past. We did not want a big rock, this, these are huge rocks.
I understand what they were, I know what riprap was like, yeah.
I, I, I know that, but, but that's why it's never been a, it's never been on the table. I have never, we have never costed out riprap, because the little bit of riprap that he wants to put in there, it is gonna be, is gonna change that landscape quite a bit.
Well, they're arbitrarily telling us we have to change our landscape, that's what we're trying to
We can put this landscape within just a couple of years, with the articulated concrete block, we can make this look virtually the same as it looks right now, minus a few
All I know is John Robersch, he basically said, you do not wanna go, in a lot of blocks.
Let's, let's ask them what's going on, we can run these plans concurrently to see
Oh, absolutely, we can, we can look at that.
So, and, and why don't you get a recommendation from
It's, it's not what we want, see, that's the, the dilemma is, is none of us are experts, I mean, we don't know anything about dams, but it's, it's impressive, what we're looking for is the least cost solution, that is, you know, yeah, aesthetics get into it at a point, but we're not, if, the only way to solve this is to have the aesthetics go downhill, riprap doesn't look that bad, I mean, it's sitting down the road, I mean, it's what the, you know, but, but I think we should also be pursuing the legal.
Yeah.
'Cause I question if, now, what he said, you know, you question, do they really have the authority to force you to do something?
And that's the point I'd like to come up to now, if you are comfortable, call the town's attorney and ask them for a recommendation
Absolutely.
From someone who can handle this.
Yeah, knows this law.
This is what they do.
Yeah.
And at least we can talk to that person and know where we stand.
Okay.
And know if it's gonna, if it's gonna cost us a hundred and fifty thousand to fight the state, it's gonna cost twenty, or if it's gonna cost a million.
Right.
Then we might know it's, we're not gonna win.
Okay.
But at least we have all these alternatives and we need to present these alternatives to town meeting before we come up, hey, we need a half a million dollars to put, you
Right, right.
Okay. 'Cause you're gonna have people that go, oh, bring it back to a stream.
Right.
Yeah. So, I will
Okay.
Start looking at riprap. Or a combination.
And if you like, we can have John Robersch
Any other suggestions they have, and John'd be more than glad to walk it
Yeah.
To, to get the cost down, but I am now back to, as Cantlin said
This was one guy.
Said, one guy came in here and reclassified us from a normal hazard to a high hazard dam, who the hell gave them Who the hell gave them the authority to do that?
Especially-
What person?
There was, there was one inspector who was here.
Right.
And the rules, the rules changed at exactly the time that we were taking it over. This was not one person's decision.
And that's where you need an expert in, does that mean that all existing structure, none of them were grandfathered? You're telling me that dam in Canton is not grandfathered?
Well, as far as its classification on what hazard level it is, it wasn't grand, nothing is grandfathered.
We don't know the answers to all these questions, that's why we need to find some ideas.
That's why I'd like to hear a turn, you know, you know, with this word.
Because I'm sure we're not the only people looking at this unfair burden.
Yep. Okay.
All right, so hopefully we'll have-
We will get an attorney.
Now, we don't want to communicate that to DES, I mean, at this stage. Right, I mean, we're, all we're doing is trying to, I mean, is it, to me, it's the, the, it's not the preferred option.
No, I mean, yeah, I mean, we're not-
We want to do what's right, we want to continue to keep this place safe and up to date and everything going on.
Right, yeah.
But we want to do it in a way that's affordable.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right, so let's go on to the next thing, we have, Chris is here.
I made it.
I, I didn't.
Yeah, yeah.
They have three main couples in mind.
All right.
Yeah.
So for EMS calls, it's about, year-to-date, we're about a hundred and nine compared to a hundred and twenty-six last year.
Okay.
That because of a slow ski season?
Yeah, pretty much, and the spring's been a little slow. Last, last week, though, it's starting to pick up in frequency. We had a dark bicycle accident on Monday. Everyone's gonna be fine now.
So the individual is, that, that got airlifted out, looks like they'll be okay?
Yeah, yep, yeah. The fishing derby went very well, I don't know if you got an update from Brooke on that?
Yeah, she did.
Okay, that was a success, we had good weather for a change.
And Chris, and Dave Noiser was on television.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
I didn't see that.
Yeah, I, was it last week?
Oh, that was for the-
Yeah, for the kid, for the, for the gal that had the moose accident, right, yeah.
I didn't see that, yeah. So now we're moving forward to the Fourth of July, I'm working on the fireworks display, get the permits in for that. That's, that's about, about it.
Oh, by the way, it reminds me, in Fourth of July, I've had nothing but positive comments how nice it is to see the flags.
Yep.
Oh, good.
Yes, same thing. People said-
I've had a lot of comments.
Keep watching, keep watching.
I heard we lost a child at the high school today.
Yes.
Was that a car wreck in Romney?
I believe so, yeah.
She's from Romney.
Oh.
Yeah, senior.
Died?
Neto, yeah, it was big.
Whoa.
Do you know who it was?
She's graduating Saturday.
She had a Neto.
Aye.
A Netu, I think it's now a Netu, N-E-B-E-A-U.
That's too bad. Especially graduations, what, this weekend?
Yeah, Saturday.
I think that's what I'm-
You were asking earlier about the robbery.
Oh, yeah, the robbery. I was talking to someone over at Waterville Place. And remember, we were talking, some of our citizens had thought some jewelry was missing and they never thought, well, it could have been our other house and, did that turn out to actually be a robbery?
I still don't know.
Okay.
I know there was an insurance settlement on it.
Okay.
So once there's an insurance settlement, the, we're still working on it, but the, the, so, the victims aren't as eager to-
Right.
To, not that they're not cooperating, but they're not, you know.
But we haven't had any break-ins or lost properties.
No, no, I, I mean, occasionally, we'll get a call around this time of year from someone who was here last fall.
Right.
And they'll say, "I think somebody was in my unit," whether it be the kind of door unlocked or partially open or whatever. So the first thing we do is have them look for anything missing and we haven't had anything like that.
Okay.
Good. Had a new police cruiser yet?
No, we're getting a little bit of a runaround from the company. It was supposed to be here. It's, it's, again, it's the same situation we have with the ambulance, how that got delayed because there's people that buy more of them, that need more of them, and we kind of take the backseat. So the inventory, the car inventory, they used the word reallocated to other, other places. It's still, we're still only a couple of weeks away, only delayed a couple of weeks and we're getting them to 2017 instead of 2016 for the same price.
Okay.
All right.
Nothing else by me.
Margaret?
No.
Thanks very much.
All right. Stay safe. All right, correspondence. We have a letter here from, with, we're, we're a planning participant in the Department of Agriculture of the Ranger District.
Yes.
And does this mean they're gonna shut down the campgrounds on-
Yes, all the, all the campsites along the road are gonna be closed and they're gonna be consolidated into actual camp, new camp areas that are talked about in the-
Mostly on the other side.
Mostly on the other side, on the Woodstock side.
Have they commented at all, one way or the other, into their intentions to maintain Triple I Road?
No, there's no plans.
About a year ago, they were talking about opening up.
Well, no, 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 my concern is, is because of the campgrounds, at least they send the greater over once a year to try to keep it, because my guess would be the reason they want to get all those campgrounds out of there, one of the reasons they want to give up on the road.
Yeah, they, they will, it'll be less and less maintained.
So when you were saying the Woodstocks, Woodstock side, are we talking about the other side of ninety-three?
No, the, after the top of the hill, when you start down on the other side, that's the Woodstock side and that's where the campgrounds-
Oh, no, I, I, okay, I was just wondering if they weren't gonna, there was gonna be no camping at all from Waterville to ninety-three, so.
There will be no camping from Waterville to ninety-three. All those roadside campsites-
Right.
Will become, will be closed-
Right.
Discontinued. And then they will build new campsites, campgrounds on the other side, on the Woodstock side, but off the road. They, they identify new-
You would still have to take Triple I Road to get to these, or not?
You'll be able to access it.
Probably from the other end, from ninety-three.
You'd have to come from the other end side.
You'll come from Woodstock.
Or you-
You wouldn't come from the side.
And that's what Bill is talking about, and I think he's exactly right. Now, the maintenance of Triple I Road from this side over will be virtually non-existent.
As it is now.
As, as it-
Well, no, they've been doing some. The, 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 the bad part is on our side where it was paved. Where they grade it on the other side, it's always fine, you know, it's been fine. But, but it's gonna become like the, 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 the center sandwich road.
Yes.
Yeah.
I mean, which is, you know, undrivable unless you've got a-
Yep. And I, I think you're absolutely right, that's what their intent is.
Well, you know, I, I just, Chris has left, from a public safety perspective and emergency access perspective, are they concerned at all about that?
Yeah, it's our number one hazard issue.
We, we ought to somewheres go on record then, if that's the case.
Our, our hazard mitigation plan actually has that as the number one issue and the Forest Service gets it.
Right, well-
The Forest Service participated in that process.
Right, well, we ought to, right, and, and so that, you know, I'm wondering whether we should, I, I, I'm not saying put it in writing, which at this stage, but maybe have a conversation. Our expectation is then that the road will be maintained to its current standards.
Okay.
You know, because it is, you know, a hazard mitigation access problem on our part.
Right, absolutely. I can, I will-
Okay, good. Yeah, I don't think I'd get it in writing until they officially say they're not gonna maintain it anymore.
Well, no, but I, I think-
Because they're, we'll get their backs up against the wall.
I think, well, I think in response to this letter, that we can just send them a letter and say, "Thank you for notifying us." However, you know, we want to reiterate-
Yes, that's exactly the tone, right, yeah.
Okay, so we'll, we'll do that.
Okay. Does anyone know where Hicks Mountain Road or Mack Brook Road are?
It's, it's, it's basically a little bit beyond where the paving on the other side stops.
Okay.
You know, so it's past Russell Campground, but it, it's on a map somewheres, they said, actually, if you look it up, you can find it.
Okay. Any other correspondence, Mark?
No, that's all I have right now.
All right, privilege of the floor number two, Luke was here, but he was gone, so he didn't need us. Have we got anything else, or I've got something for-
No, we got non-public.
Yeah, I've got-
That's the only, only thing I can think of.
Well, it's four thirty-five, I'm gonna ask us to go into non-public, please.
Thank you, Jim.
Welcome. Have a good evening. See you later.
So the rumor of the day down, and you would notice, is that-